Good evening, everyone. I now call this meeting to order at six oh two. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Before we get into the rest of the agenda, we're gonna have a special presentation by the Lions Club, the Acton Shapley Lions Club.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bill McGary and I'm here with President Richard Dason. Happens to be my day ago. Richard's the president of the Acton Shapley Lions Club. And we're here for a couple of specific purposes tonight. The first one is to make a couple monetary presentations. The first one is for five hundred dollars for the Thanksgiving baskets that you folks put up every year. And the second presentation is for your fuel assistance. Two years ago, we were fortunate enough to donate a thousand dollars to Acton's Fuel Assistance. Last year, we donated fifteen hundred. This year, because of the hard work and everything and the community support, we're able to donate two thousand dollars. All this is with eleven members. Yeah, the, uh... I'd like to also, if I could take a minute?
Yeah, of course.
Inform you of some of the other uses of our money that we raise. We had a, our monthly meeting Monday night, and we voted on all these donations. In addition to the fuel assistance for Acton, we do the same for the town of Shapley. The Thanksgiving baskets, Shapley as well. The Acton Food Pantry and the Shapley Food Pantry, we're gonna donate fifteen hundred dollars each. Dr. Reed, you ready? Oh, the scholarships at Acton, a thousand dollars this year. We doubled it, as well as Mesibisik High School. We donate to Camp Sunshine, the corner cupboard in Sanford, Honor Flight, Life Flight, Make-A-Wish, the York County Shelter Food Pantry, the York County Thanksgiving Baskets, the Trunk-a-Tree. And we have another one this year. It's a resident of Acton. It's a lady that's going through a medical issue, and we're happy to make a six hundred dollar donation to that fund as well. Now, when I started speaking, I said I had a couple of things. That's the first thing out of the way. The second thing I want to talk about is, and Tom, he'll probably remember it. We saw him the other night and his wife at our semi-annual Turkey Den, which was very successful. That's why we were able to donate so much. But I said to Tom, I said, "You know, we're the Acton Shapley Lions Club, and, you know, we don't have a single member from Acton." And he says, "Why is that?" And I said, "That's a good question." So, we're here to appeal. I know this is probably getting ill, and hopefully the people are watching. We need your help. The city of Sanford, the town of Newfield recently had a disband lack of membership.
Well, we have some Acton residents that I'm certain will love to join.
That's good. We'd love to have them. You know, we're getting older, we're aging out. We need the young blood. Oh, we'll take the old blood, too. We'll take any. Any warm body. But we really need the help, and if you can spread the word, we really would appreciate it.
Yeah, you folks do such incredible work for the town. I mean, I know the neighbors have neighbors. They do such incredible outreach, so every dollar that you donate and raise for them goes a long way.
Every, and we try to keep it all local.
What is it, what's involved in becoming a member?
Just come to one of our meetings, fill out the form. We send your fee to the International Lions. Frown on us a little bit, 'cause we don't deal to their ones and give them all their money they want. Then we pay dues. Dues for one person is sixty a year. For a couple, it's ninety.
So just attend the meetings and get involved?
No, we don't require you to come to every meeting. Just once. Volunteer when we have our events. The most volunteers left. We now, because we now got these hospital equipment in Sanford. We took that over. So we, anybody that needs equipment, there's two numbers to call. One of the Sanford Lions is still doing it with me.
I'm not familiar with that. Could you explain?
If you need, I can need a wheelchair, crutches.
Oh, I see.
Anything. I got stuff in me I don't even know what it is.
We take donations, 'cause we often have people looking to donate.
If they wanna donate, let me know. If they can't drop it off, I'll pick it up. I just picked up a whole truckload of stuff yesterday.
Now, you mentioned recently that you have a need for shower chairs?
Shower chairs is my need right now. I can't keep them in. I mean, they go all out the door.
And we meet the fourth Monday of every month at the Shapley Library at seven o'clock. And the last thing I got to say is Saturday morning is our monthly pancake breakfast. That'll be held at the Shapley Community Building. It's really a nice meal. Or in this particular Saturday.
You used to have them here, right?
What's that?
Used to have them here.
Ah, we did.
Yeah, for a long time.
Yeah, and we really appreciated that.
The elevator's beautiful over there. We understand why you moved.
Well, I suspect that.
We understand. One note on this Saturday's Pancake Breakfast. We're inviting all veterans and the guests to come join us for free. Love to help them. Any other questions?
I'd like to thank the board for allowing the Renaissance Fair to fare rounds. That is a major, major moneymaker here.
Really?
That paid, oh, yeah.
Renaissance and the fair?
Yep. The fair, we do the fair, but the Renaissance kind of pays for all the supplies. So we can, we know a lot of local people can't afford the rates that we charge at the Renaissance Fair. So we lower our rates at the Acton Fair so people can go half price with the recharge at Renaissance.
Thanks very much for everything.
It's always hot.
The work you did.
It's like ice you guys.
That's a great way to start off. So have the warrants and bills all been assigned? And perolled this week's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second that.
On favor? And minutes of last week's meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of last week's meeting. I'll second that.
On favor? And then with that, we'll be moving into the Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
The only update that I have this week is that I'm proud to announce that we are going to work in conjunction with the Acton Food Pantry to do a Town of Acton Neighbor Helping Neighbors Food Drive. As we've seen between the government shutdown and SNAP benefits, we've actually had people reach out in Acton, which doesn't happen often. So we've seen an influx of requests. So we met with the Food Pantry and got a list of things that they could need, they were looking for. So our goal is to fill this room in November. We'll set some tables up. We're encouraging you on Election Day next Tuesday to bring your items. There'll be a slide posted later tonight or tomorrow. They put together their top ten or twelve items that go the most, are most popular. So you'll see those listed on there. They're looking for some perishable items, but they ask that you contact the church directly. Please don't bring your milk and butter and cheese here, but they're happy to take it on the right day. Otherwise, we just appreciate everybody wanting to bring items in. We'll start with our neighbor helping neighbors going and buying, you know, a hundred dollars' worth of goods to get the table stocked.
That's awesome. And with that, we'll be moving into the liaison update, beginning with John.
All I have right now is on Monday, Simplify Green Homes came at eight thirty on the money. And spray foam underneath the library. So that was a success. And that's gonna make, yeah, it's gonna make a big difference under there. Affordable Comfort is pushed back because they are still working with efficiency May to determine what our rebate is going to be. So hopefully, within the next couple of days, I'll have another date for them to come in to do the mini splits.
And so what's left of that project is the mini splits? From everything that you got?
That's, that's all it's left.
That's awesome.
Who pays for the heat in that building?
Which building?
The library.
We do.
We do? So if there are savings from this, they'll accrue to the town?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Next, we'll go on to John. I mean, I've spent time on him.
I'm all set. I have nothing to report.
Okay.
David?
I do. Municipal grounds. I talked to Grandin, Representative from Grandin today, supervisor. He called me, told me that they're wrapping up. Told me that these trailers out here will be gone by Thanksgiving. He did ask me about the power, that they run out there, whether or not they were gonna come up and rip it all out or if we wanted to leave it. Checked it out. I think at this point in time, we ought to leave it so that we can possibly talk to rec director and put the Christmas tree out front.
Yeah, I told you.
Okay, well, we'll figure something else out.
We'll use something else. I knew she was listening.
She's on the fence. She's on the fence, I think.
I wonder how she really feels about it.
I don't know. She could've gone like this, but no.
That's why I tried to prep you by saying.
But I, I, I think it's a good idea to leave it all there.
I will use it for all.
Is it right on a pole or?
No, it's, it's on a, like a full white board post.
Oh, okay.
Stuck up. And there's a box there. Maybe it's something where we might wanna put something.
Put a key gun.
Make it high.
Make it so the snowplow guy can see it. You know? It is quite a ways over there, so we... But I talked to them about the field up there and, you know, they're gonna level up. Wanted to know, they wanted them all chairs. Nope, leave it the way it is. Hoping that they're gonna drop off some melons so it's for those in there. And if so, just double them back. I'll take care of it, you know, on the following weekends for it.
Is that on the upper lot?
Lower lot, lower lot. And...
The lower lot is?
Where the building.
Where they were in parking in there?
Yeah.
That's called the lower lot? I see. Okay.
Even though it is lower.
That's what I was gonna say. Could we use some melons on the other lot?
We could, yeah.
Would they be open to that, maybe?
Yeah, well, we're, I'm trying to get as much melon as I can.
Yeah, get as much as maybe we can spread some there.
Yeah, so I'm gonna go up and do a, check it out all over here this weekend.
Thanks for doing all that, David. We got a lot out of that. Saved it as well, so it's a good deal, a good barter.
Yeah, I think it's worked out all right. And hopefully, you know, we'll see what's been completed up there and see what's gonna cost to finish it. I think we saved a lot of money, so.
I know that he went by last Friday, and there was a good-sized pile of melons in there already.
Yeah, yeah, so. So, yeah, he's gonna leave us what he can. 'Cause I know they got a bunch up there, so. So I had a pretty discussion with him. So I will probably contact with him at the beginning of the week again. And let's see anybody else. I don't have anything on Cemetery Committee and all the real committee.
Is storage shed gonna be moved up there? 'Cause that's where they originally wanted it. I guess that's lower.
Yeah, no, it's, we put it where they won't, where you guys.
Well, no, what I wanted it was at the bottom of the field, towards the...
Right, but I thought it was not.
And maybe at some point, we'll see what the rec director wants to do. Different director, different ideas.
Right, that's...
And whatever she wants.
The rec committee, I recall, was rather upset that it wasn't gonna be in the lower lot, I guess.
My, my idea was to put it down towards the lower lot where the gate is. And so it wouldn't be up by the basketball court, so basketballs and bombs off it.
Give us a little more room up there, yeah.
So, but, well, I guess later I'll figure that out.
Okay.
Other than that, I have nothing.
Thank you for all the work on that. I have nothing for the planning board. The Melsom Dan Coalition's been meeting next Monday at five.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you talk to the chair of Melsom?
Yeah, that's why I was just...
Well, I know, but I was only impressed you talked to her last week, and she's...
No, I talked to her this week.
She's reaching out again, okay, so just wanted to make sure.
We've been talking, so they're gonna be meeting at... But this coming Monday at five. And then we have our rec director who'll be coming up later, so I don't have anything to share in regards to that. So with that being said, we'll be moving into our department head and committee chair updates, beginning with our town treasurer, Lauren Hayes.
Good evening. I'm Lauren, your treasurer. Most of you guys know me. So just a few things, you know, budget season has started, so I've been working with the department head, just making sure we're getting some numbers together for presentations, which are gonna start next week. As part of budget season, social services have also started to roll in. So I think from last year's, we have not received one. I did send a follow-up email, but haven't received anything back, so we'll just assume that they're not looking this year. The social services payments for this current year were mailed out last week, so all of the social services should have received those by now and catched them. And then new this year, we're starting to be putting together a capital improvement plan. So I'm working closely with Mark Roy, getting some paperwork out to the department head so they can start thinking, you know, in five, ten, fifteen years, any big projects that they have in mind, any new equipment that they wanna add. They can start thinking about the timeline for that, and we can have a report ongoing year after year. I am meeting with Mark weekly, so we have a standing meeting on Monday afternoons, just kind of going over weekly to-dos, payroll, AP questions that might come up, any questions I have for any corrections that may need to be done. And then anything quarterly or something new that is happening this year that needs to be addressed. Part of that is the Maine PFMLA, so I've been working with him on that. We just submitted our quarterly report for the PFML as well as the quarterly wages for the IRS and the state of Maine. It has been very busy the last two weeks with taxes coming in, so I was making a bank run once a day, trying to get the money deposited, as well as running scans for the checks. I probably scanned about a couple thousand checks and got that all processed. So it's starting to slow down finally. One of the things that I typically do on a quarterly basis is just updating our vendor records, making sure we have our W9s and insurances are all caught up and up to date before any of the work has been starting. And then, starting next month, we have our annual enrollment. So I've got some new figures from Maine Municipal that'll be going out next month. So if anyone wants to make any changes, anyone that's enrolled can do that at that point. And then another thing that I have going on next month is our 2023 lean foreclosures are gonna be starting. So at the end of September, I just sent out a friendly reminder notice for anyone that had a pending balance. And then mid-November, we're gonna be sending out our forty-day notices certified so that people will be aware that those are due. And that foreclosure process is gonna start in January.
We had a good response from your first letter, so I appreciate you doing that. We got a good amount of people that paid for the impending, so that was a good choice. Good job.
Pretty much it so far.
The open enrollment. Have we received any indication of what the premium increases will be?
We have, I just got those today from Debbie, so they finalized those on Friday. So health insurance is going up nine percent. Yes. Dental is going up five percent. And then we're switching from the One Vision Program, VSP, to IMED this year. And as far as I'm aware, they didn't indicate any price increases for the vision. But, yeah, that nine percent kind of threw me off when I saw that.
Did you give any indication why the, or it was healthcare? It's going up nine. What's happening to retirement? Anything?
So Maine-Purs, I have not received any updated changes for 2026. So I'm hoping to reach out to them November and see if they have any changes.
Does the healthcare ever give you any explanation for their increase at nine percent?
So they did send out some notifications with that increase this year, and it's primarily related to prescription costs and just the cost of what they're paying per employee. So I did print a form. I printed the wrong one. I don't know. Oh, let's see what this one is. So this was just the percentage increase, but primarily that they're paying a lot more in healthcare rates than they have in the past, and they're not securing much extra from what they're raising in premiums to cover those costs. And the primary increase, again, is just from the prescription costs and how many people are now filling prescriptions.
If you have that correspondence, could you send me that, please?
I certainly can.
I'd like to look at it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do we ever meet with them?
No.
Nine percent's a big increase. I can't imagine healthcare costs has gone up that much.
I look, I can't remember what the increase was last year. Debbie Bridges is my contact at Employee Health Trust, and she kind of stops by once a year. So she was in this summer, I believe. But I reached out to her on Tuesday because I hadn't seen any of the changes yet. And they, like I said, they just finalized those on Friday, and open enrollment starts on the fifteenth, so.
Typically, they determine and publish, actually, the industry does it, what's called a trend rate. And the trend rate is a forecast of what they think will be happening to healthcare costs. And most plans use that to build their premiums on. So I'm curious what the trend rate was versus nine percent. Is that, I don't think the trend rate was nine percent.
All right, well, I'll definitely do a little bit of digging.
Thank you.
I wanted to just get some of the highlights for you, so.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
I'll make sure to get that sent over and read some of those highlights myself.
Thank you for all the work that you do.
Appreciate that you did such a great job.
Thank you very much.
You need anything from us?
No, I appreciate the support everyone's been giving me. Like I said, I've been working with Mark regularly. He's a great asset. I've been asking him, you know, questions here and there that have come up, and I've got a little to-do list of questions I have, and I'm trying to save my responses so when it comes back in the future, whether it's a week later or six months later, I can remember how to go back and do it. And still learning all of the systems that we have in town, so Trio can be a little tricky sometimes, and I'm getting my, the hang of it and get my feet a little more wet there, so. Everything is working out very well, and I appreciate all the support I'm getting.
Thank you.
Thanks, John, tonight.
And next, we'll have our recreation director, Amanda Winchell.
I'm gonna be a little rude and read off this so I don't miss anything, 'cause I have two pages that I've checked up. It's been a year officially since I started and wrapped up my first soccer season with a few bumps in the road. But it ended on Sunday. We had three of the four teams present to celebrate the end of the season. Each team got presented with certificates that were personalized for each kiddo and a medal with some cupcakes and some fun little treats there. In the end, the overall season was very successful. We had more away games than home games for the first time, which was nice for some of the kiddos to get to travel after being home for so long due to COVID. The coaches will also be getting a little thank you from the rec committee in the mail in the next week or so. Just a big thank you. We did a big post on Facebook to thank them for all of their efforts and whatnot. Yeah, soccer is done. And moving on to basketball and cheer, which I'll have to get to in a minute. But I know there were some folks that talked about some of the issues that happened at a home game a couple weeks ago. There was an email that was sent to me that same day that they came to the meeting. Emails have been responded to and addressed and assured that, you know, all of their questions, concerns have been looked into, are being looked into and being addressed. With that being said, one of the things that has been in the works since my first season with basketball is a Coach Expectations Guide. The first draft is ready for review and will be hopefully ready to be used for the basketball season. That document will address a lot of the issues that were raised in the last meeting, so it includes behavior expectations, escalation handling conflicts, complaint procedures, communication expectations, all the stuff and all the things. So that'll be helpful for all the coaches to have everything level set, and it will be used for all of the seasons going forward, not just one. Backing up just a little bit, the, what I said before, this was my first season, my first full year. So the intent of my first year was to really get foundations laid and start building after that. So now that we've got the committee on hand, we still have position, one position available. But we've got a strong committee, and the next step for us is to start looking at other programs or other activities that we can incorporate into the rec. So not just for kids and the sports, but maybe some community activities, picnics, hikes, things like that. So our committee is looking into some different ideas, and we'll be incorporating that into the budget for next year. The, similar to the coach expectations, there is a parent information and expectations document that is in the works. The first draft should be ready for basketball as well. The purpose of that will be similar to coaches' is to ensure that our parents know what to expect for communications and methods, behavior expectations, making sure they're treating everybody with respect, reminding them that this is typically sixth grade and under, so there is no collegiate representatives present during those games or matches. And then just making sure that they understand what the schedules look like, what the games are, and what they can kind of expect from all of that. Competition cheer started in October. Enrollment was up, just like we expected it to be. I think they have about thirty-one participants this year, which is up from twenty-six last year. They do plan to have two to four competitions this year and will end with an expo at the school for the community to attend. That was really well-received last year. The coaches there, especially Nicole, who really organizes all of it, does an amazing job. I am very much hands-off. She takes care of everything and reaches out when she needs anything. The school's been fantastic to partner with with that as well since they take over the cafeteria five days a week. Basketball cheer and basketball registration is open, and we are trying to find some coaches early to help with scheduling. So basketball tends to be a tougher season with the school. Also tends to be busy for a lot of families, and so if we can get the schedule ahead of time, helps people determine whether or not they can participate or register and things like that. I'm also really excited to say that for the first time, I'm not taking the lead in this. My newest committee member, Meg Gabel, will be stepping in to help coordinate all of the basketball season, so she'll be reaching out, scheduling with the coaches, making the game schedule and partnering with me on that. So she'll be really helping support that, so one less thing. What an exciting thing there. We've already had three teams reach out that are interested in playing with us again. So we've got Winnie Hoops, we've got Berwick, and we have Wake Fields that are all looking to play against us again this year. I'm assuming Milton will wanna come back as well as potentially Waterboro. So lots of good folks to play against there. And then I've been in touch with the school as well. They tend to offer the same sports that they have the last couple years, so soccer, basketball, volleyball, and lacrosse. We've heard from a lot of folks that lacrosse is a pretty big interest for those kids that are getting closer to middle school and where we don't have a lot of interest in baseball historically over the last three or four years. Looking to incorporate some of that Looking to incorporate some of that into some short-term clinics for the spring session. So we do have some equipment already in the shed. I'm just looking to see what that might look like. So trying to incorporate some new sports, potentially field hockey for those that want to play as they're approaching middle school age. We don't operate here, but other local towns do, so it's just something to help get some more interest and something to keep them busy in the spring. We haven't looked into volleyball or basketball just yet, but I'm sure that we can partner again with the school to look to see if there's any availability for the spring to maybe do some clinics there as well. But all of that is early discussions. Nothing's been planned, but lots of ideas floating around that will start to look to implement in the coming weeks and months. That's it.
Well, thank you. I know a lot of these things that you mentioned, you mentioned like way back in your interview to see that you're like at this point where they're starting to come to fruition. It's really exciting to just see the growth.
One yard by one, ready to hit the ground running.
Yeah, and I want to say, and I've worked with Amanda one-on-one for all this, and she's done phenomenal. Her communication is great. She reaches out anytime. She's calm and actually handles situations very well, stressful or otherwise. And you've been a pleasure to work with, so thank you.
Well, not on the day, Joe.
You mentioned there was somebody that was assisting you with basketball. Do you have someone like that for all of the sports?
Not yet. That's the goal.
That is the goal, to have someone like that for, and is that, is that a rather hefty assignment for them, or how does that work?
Not after I've done it myself and I can really put together sort of an SOP, a standard operating document for them, so they can just.
So you're giving them a little handbook of what to do?
Yep, just handing it off, saying, here's what to do, and I'm gonna help delegate and support and be there for their questions, just like Jen's been for me.
Very good, very good.
Lacrosse thing, I was a little confused. Are you talking about not doing baseball, but lacrosse instead? Is that what you're talking about?
We would do multiple. So the idea is, we got this idea last year. There was a few folks that reached out. Apparently, Shapley did something similar where they had short-term clinics and the kids got to pick between two to three sports. And they did sort of an info session, saying, hey, here's the basics, here's the foundation for how to play baseball. Here's the foundation for lacrosse, or whatever the case may be. So the kids can get a little bit of a taste for various sports. The spring season, we don't have enough to fill a full season with baseball. We don't have enough kids that have really gained interest in it. So what I'm thinking within a sense is do one to two weeks of multiple sports, assuming that we can get the volunteer support for it. Keep them busy. Give them something to do.
Need anything from us?
I'll try, though, but not right now. Apparently, I'm living in a shed sometimes.
Anything other than budget.
No.
Good, thank you for coming out today. Thank you for everything that you've been doing with the committee and to the committee members as well.
Thank you.
Good night.
Do we have any other department head or committee chairs?
Oh, Lany, real pusher. I don't know what I said last week, but all the paving's done this year. Lebden Road is all done. Hawk Road is all done. They come in, they finish paving to Shoreland Hawk Road, I mean, not Hawk Road, Lebden Road. We did Hawk Road on Monday, and we went into the driveways. It was just faster to do with the skid steer than it was to have them going there. And also, this week, we've been hauling a lot of sand. We finished today. Yesterday, we hauled one thousand one hundred and sixty-two yards, and today we hauled one thousand one hundred and twenty-two yards. We probably had, oh, fifteen hundred yards left in the building from last year. So that, that's putting us right around thirty-five to thirty-six hundred yards we have in the building right now. It's full. I mean, we stacked up. We made a bigger platform, stacked it right to the top and everything. And then this year, we built a big berm around it, and then we filled in the middle, so nothing, all the sand's on the yellow line in there and everything. So we have enough room in there right now. Next week, when I get you guys a number for the salt, we'll have enough room to probably put a hundred ton on each side of the corner for right now until we start hauling some salt off, so.
So you left enough room in there to get some salt?
Yeah, I could probably put a hundred ton in each corner, then the loaders are probably just gonna have to sit outside for a couple of storms, because it's gonna be full in there when we get done, so.
You can put your loader right in the shed, can't you?
We'll have two down there this year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I mean, yeah, the bulldozer's in the yellow line, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I mean, they gotta stay outside. I mean, we might be able to get them in. It is what it is, but yeah, we're, we're full. We know it worked out good this year. We, we built a big berm around it first, and then we filled it from the middle, worked it way out. And it worked out real good with the sand. And we had a triax on the trailer dump yesterday, and it, it, we were, we were full throttle yesterday, keeping up. And then we had two triax, we had the trailer dump this morning for three rounds, and then we were running out of room. I couldn't dump them inside anymore, and I don't like dumping them outside, just a waste of time. So they had another triax to come in, and we hauled all afternoon, and we got that up. And then also, next week, next Friday, I got a call from the gentleman that's the engineer for the state for the 109 project. And they're having like a final walkthrough of the project, I guess, and he asked me to be there. I guess to just represent, you know, myself as the road commissioner, because there we have Goddard Road, San Pedro, and Hawk Road, Young's Ridge. And it joins with the town road, so they just want me to be there if I have any questions, so I told them.
You talking about this project right here?
Yeah, this project, yeah.
They're, they're also gonna be doing a project down through here, aren't they?
I, I don't know. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I just told them I'd be there if they want me there as a road commissioner, in case I have any questions, but, so that's what's going on right now, so.
Any questions? Hey, are there any other department head or committee chair updates? Seeing none, we'll move into all business, beginning with Article 43, Abbott Road.
Right, so this was tabled. David Vincent had a chance to go out and look at it, and I believe he's got some updates?
I did. I do, yeah. So I took a ride up to Abbott Road, that was last night, and checked out the culvert. I had the call well, because it was, couldn't figure out which one we're supposed to be looking at. And so I took a look at it, and I spoke to Jay today. I believe he asked if we needed anything. I told him that there was some more information that we needed. And if you want, come right on up, Jay. So what I did is I, I looked at what has been done and what needs to be done. And what was described on the, on the things to do list there was pretty much a spreading somebody out of the gravel and ditching that. Ask me that right there. So, you know, spread the thirty yards of gravel, no, not thirty yards, where is it, forty-eight yards of gravel, and ditching that, that piece of top there. And so my concern was with the project was, and I explained this to Jay, was nothing here was a mitigating, solving a problem. No mitigating problem. That's what this is supposed to be for. So I asked him, he asked me if there was anything he needed. I said, I'd like to have it. Did, did we get that?
We don't have a updated estimate. We're still working on that. The contractor was unable to complete something before tonight's meeting.
Okay, so what I suggested to Jay was, obviously, in a situation like this, it's supposed to fix a problem. There'll be a maintenance issue. Ditching and adding gravel is a maintenance issue. Put in cement pools and stuff like that, riprap, that would mitigate the problem. So that's, that's what you're, you're, you're getting an estimate on, correct?
Yes, I do want to address that issue, as we've done some investigating since the conversation today, this afternoon, on your suggestion on a plunge pool. And based on what we've gotten from the DEP, that that is not advisable because there are sporn, spawning fish there, and they don't want to disturb that area where the plunge pool would have to be.
No, plunge pool would be right at the end of the culvert.
Right, and they don't want it there.
Then what I would suggest then is to have DEP tell you how to remedy this problem, come back to us with a remedy. Because other than that, it's maintenance.
So here's the, the problem.
I know, you could do a plunge pool. When you do a culvert, any culvert, you could do a plunge pool at the end of a culvert. You're, you're a long ways away from the, the stream. So, but I don't want to get anybody in trouble with DEP, so I'm telling, I mean, I, I'm not okay with this, Jay, just by ditching your roto and having the new ditch line that you just created, that's not gonna be stabilized before winter, okay, washed into that stream without having some way of stopping the sediment before it gets there. So we need somebody smarter than me to come up with a plan to how to make that happen. And I don't think there's anybody else around here smarter than me on this, other than DEP, so.
I'm not in a position to dispute or confirm, so.
I am, but I'm not gonna open up a vegetated ditch line and then go through the winter time and have dump in there with no place for it to go, other than the, the stream.
I think what the point is, is that, as David named, the mitigation problem, so if you could go back to DEP and see if there's anything else that exists.
That's what we should be doing anyways. I thought that's what we were doing right along.
Well, I was reading the, the simulations. It, it, it says to attach, you know, attach proof or attach this or that, but it's not requiring anything from DEP.
Yeah, so I mean.
Or maybe have a look at the application if it continues.
That's what I'm saying. I think with that being said, since we don't have anything before us in that capacity.
So I, I, Jay, I'm just, I'm a little confused. DEP thinks it's all right to ditch that uphill side and then have everything drain down into the swamp, into the stream?
I don't believe that they said that.
Well, that's what you're doing.
So what the problem is, we have the water coming off of the end of the roadway, which is much higher than where it is going over that stream. So one of the thoughts, talking to the contractor today, was to grade it from the, the side of the, the lakeside back to the other side of the road. Because we do have to get all the water out of the road. Right now, it's running straight down the middle. It's eroding, and then it's also putting it back into the lake. It's a critical area right there. So we have to make sure that we have a proper ditching, which right now really doesn't exist. Because the road is, is too low, for one thing. We have to bring the road back up to grade. And then make sure that the ditching is all working where it's supposed to and taking it down into that culvert under the driveway there and then dumping it into.
The stream.
Well, dump, it, it's a little bit ways from the stream. It would, we're gonna dump it to the, to the right of the road.
So even though it's far enough away from the stream, you can do a plunge pool there? So what, the, the issue I have with what you're talking about doing is tipping the road so all the water goes to the ditch line instead of dispersing it, okay? Now you're forcing more water into a ditch line that is heading for the stream. So you're not solving anything. You're making it worse, because you're just adding more volume of water. So what I want to see is something that's gonna stop all that extra dirt and water that you just forced into that culvert from getting into that stream. So that's why you need to get DEP involved at this point, because obviously I, I.
And honestly, for further clarification, I mean, if we, if we really broke down the application, I mean, it does say to, you know, to attach a statement describing it, attach documentation from DEP that will reply with best management practices and that DEP is concerned with the threat. The letter that's in here is from November of twenty twenty-three.
Which is the original.
Right, but it talks about the site in question and the particular, so I think you already got this fixed that it talks about. This culvert that's in here that lays out, they certainly had a concern with it, but this letter is two years ago, and I think you fixed this with Article 43 funds, so it doesn't, there's nothing for the current years either.
I just don't want to see the same thing happen that we had happen on another road that got Article 43 funds, where they were gonna do the same thing, tip the road. They didn't. Wash out everybody's doyars. It turned to a nightmare, and we paid for that. And we just don't want to pay for, I don't want to pay for something that has to be done again and again and again, because from what I'm hearing is you're just ditching, is nothing, is it gonna be riprap or anything?
Yes, there is. There's, there's riprap there currently that is going to be.
You're gonna reuse the riprap?
Some of it, yeah.
Yeah, good luck with that. So that doesn't usually work out so well. But, yeah, I, I don't see any stabilization, nothing here. All I see is ditching and, and some three-quarter ground for the road.
Will, will DEP come out and look at a project of this size? They will.
Yeah, that's what they ought to be doing.
Okay, so they'll come out and they'll do this. Do we do that on all of our Article 43?
We, we were supposed to be doing that.
Supposed to, yeah, and we didn't.
I've not heard that before, so.
Well, no one's caught that this, you know.
We were doing it, we were doing it earlier.
No, I know, but I'm saying nobody caught the letter that's in here from DEP, whether for this project. I mean, the road committee, I'm surprised before they made the recommendation, didn't catch it.
So this was for a previous project?
Yeah, two years ago.
In the same area?
For the same road, yeah.
It was for the, fixing the same problems that were there.
So is it in the same?
General area.
General area of where it was fixed before?
Well, a piece was fixed, not this piece.
It's like a multi-ranking?
So it's, it's all connected.
It's without a hundred degree each other.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we couldn't fix the, what we're talking about today until we fixed the culvert previously.
Honestly, it was, should have been the other way around, because water come from uphill. So you, you fix the issue that's pushing downhill first, okay? Then you fix the culvert, because you fix the culvert, then everything washes into that culvert, you just wasted all your time, and so.
The roadway was collapsing.
Yeah, I understand that, but it should have been done all at the same, obviously, funds and everything else, and I understand that. So I, you know, Jay, until I, I see something stating that there's gonna be some sort of mitigation here, there is none. This is just ditching and, to me, general maintenance at this point. That's what I was hoping to see something tonight. This, this doesn't do it.
Okay, I, I would just, see, I have to rely on my contractor.
Yep, yep. Don't rely on the contractor. Call DEP and they'll tell you how to do it too.
Right, right, we're working together with DEP. We have been in the past. Also, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be DEP. We have put in, it could be AWOL or it could be another organization, right? So it doesn't, it's not always DEP.
I, I just, what I'm trying to get, I think I probably don't want to beat that horse here, but we don't want, we're supposed to invest in, the money is supposed to be invested into a project that's supposed to solve a problem. This isn't solving a problem.
To help it again, right.
This is, this is a bandage on a problem. That's all this is. Because there's nothing there stopping that road from washing out again in a heavy rain.
Well, um.
There's no riprap, there's no, you know, roller grass or, you know, no, there, there's no stabilization, nothing. Nothing described here how it's gonna stop that road from washing out.
All right.
And then, and then, and then I think when we talked on the phone, that's what I wanted. I wanted a, a plan of what was gonna, you know, stop this problem. This isn't it, so.
Okay.
I, I, I want to table this.
Do you have a, is that your recommendation?
I, I would table this. I'm gonna give you an opportunity to make some phone calls. We'll leave this here.
Do you want to make a motion, then, to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We table this until you guys get some, um, response from another organization of what you're allowed to do.
An engineer.
Engineer, or somebody that is gonna mitigate this problem. Because that's what, there's these funds before is mitigating the problem.
So any discussion on table?
I'll make a second on that.
All in favor of table this until we get a second opinion from DEP or?
An engineering firm.
Engineering firm.
Well, which is it? What are we asking?
Well, the application gives them the opportunity to use DEP, AWOL, AC, the SW, a licensed engineer, or other qualifying.
I like, I like, can I, let me, I'll make the motion, I'd like to make a motion that we're gonna table this until, um, what's it, Abbott Road has a chance to contact an organization such as DEP, AWOL of some sort to give their opinion on a mitigation plan.
And have them listen on the application.
And have them listen on the application plan, and I like to have something written that, you know, they've looked at, and this is what they think that'll be done. I'll second that.
All in favor? Let's pass this.
Some of them do. Some of them have to, if you look.
We're just reading that letter from, they talked about.
Permit by role.
Yeah, it's Shoreland.
Well, permit by role, Shoreland, make sure everybody's permit, certified to do so, which they are.
Yeah.
But this is the, the grant on the stake.
Sorry. So we're now going into new business, beginning with Fire Department Command Vehicle Policy.
Okay, so we've been working with the fire chief since the passing of the command vehicle, and we've put together a draft that you guys should have all seen. Do we need to go through it?
If we could just summarize that.
So essentially, the vehicle is gonna be housed at the public safety building when the fire chief is not on duty for the town of Abbott. So if he is working his other job, it will be available to who the highest up at the fire station. It's got your standards in there that, and it's labeled like all of the other vehicles that the town owns, the fuel cars, EZ Pass. It talks about fire chief of the desert knee, you know, covering all laws, not being impaired. We do have a law that we're requiring that tracks mileage and use. And it talks about the warning lights. We've taken some models from surrounding towns. Our chief is happy with it, and we'll have any, any employee that's gonna be driving it sign off as well to make sure they reviewed it in its entirety.
I think it came out really well, and thank you, Jennifer, and I know I helped a little bit and everyone else who got this pretty quickly. So do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to accept the Fire Rescue Incident Command Vehicle Policy.
You have one.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, that's, that's.
See, so, yeah, everybody. I have all ready for you.
Um, next we'll be moving into the lawn care bids.
Okay, so per your request, we went out to bid for lawn care. As a reminder, we have had Seacoast property maintenance at fifteen thousand nine sixty for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five. So now we're gonna get into some bids. We've got quite a few. Oh, these are her terms, but.
How do we advertise this?
Uh, we advertised it in the newspaper, on the website, and then Cheryl handpicked some ten or so that she can find locally, and we mailed them copies as well. So I'm trying to cover all our bases. Okay, the first one is from Out There Acres.
Out there who?
Acres. Out There Acres.
Acres.
And we did ask them for one, two, and three. Uh, so this first one, and again, I'm gonna need some time to go through and make sure they bid everything they're supposed to. But Out There Acres has twenty-six season for thirteen thousand one ninety-five, twenty-seven season for thirteen thousand six oh one, and twenty-eight season for fourteen thousand and seven dollars.
Are they a local firm?
They're out of Shapley.
Okay.
What we really want to do with that one, yeah, is gonna average it. We gotta see what comes up with.
Yeah, I'm gonna. Yeah, I'm going to, and they've got a list of locations covered, amount of moments, but I've got to cross comparative bids to make sure that someone can table it. Spruce Property Care in Acton. 26th year for, assuming the breakdown is correct, is 49,199.
I think it was 60,000 last year.
27 with 52,643, and 28, in 2028, it would be 56,328. That one. And we have CPO's, did you as well? Drawt is, uh, let's see. 15,400. He did 15,400 for all three years. We will review them over, get some averages, make sure that everything's worked out.
Oh, there's only three?
Yeah, I didn't realize, well, I thought there was more, because she liked, she puts the return ones back in for us, so. Yeah, three, so we'll work on the spreadsheet and bring that back to you next week.
And next, we have an appointment to make.
Uh, this is for Rick Smith, as you're continuing as a deputy fire chief.
Like to make a motion to appoint Rick Smith as the deputy fire chief for, or until November 1st, 2026.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Deputy Chief Rick Smith? And last in the new business, we have a scuffle work from our road commissioner.
Like this one case, it's a, two passes then? Do you need one moment?
Oh, I know. Uh, this is just scuffle work, but we got road grading for the three dirt roads. That we're going to put on during the next week, just to do it every year, so.
What's the length of these roads?
Uh, the Gaudin Road, I think that one's almost maybe, if the dirt's maybe almost a mile. Peacock Road. What's your answer to that? I don't have it.
I'm just curious, to get an idea how many miles we're talking about.
Uh, I think it's like less than three.
Less than three?
Yeah. You have the Peacock Road, Gaudin Road, and then Flack Road.
Pretty much the same work being done on all three?
Yeah.
Is it grading and bringing in some new material?
We brought in a bunch in the spring, I won't bring any in until next spring. I don't like, I don't like putting gravel on it until I have anybody.
So this is for next spring?
No, this is for this fall.
Oh, okay.
I won't put any gravel on the road till next spring.
So you're just grading is what you're doing?
We're just grading it and rolling it.
Do you go all the way out to Flack Road?
Uh, we just go to where the town stops.
So you don't haul any gravel?
No.
And you're going to grade three miles of road for 7,100 dollars?
Well, I put, well, I put on, it's mostly a day to do each road, so.
Okay, uh, so, yeah.
Do you have any, probably a question, any thoughts on?
About to say a word.
Okay, is there any other discussion about this scuffle work that's been presented?
It looks like a day to raid a mile of road, takes about noon time. So, but, you're going to get your machinery there and all that, so it's, it's good. Just, I would thought, the skid steer, 12 hours for the skid steer, hand tools, what hand tools are you going to use to grab the road?
I would roll the road off.
Okay.
And the skid steer, we roll them all off, yeah.
Okay, yeah, good.
Do I hear a motion? Do we have more discussion for you?
Are you wanting to make a motion?
Nope, I'm asking anyone else to fit in.
This is all hot and humid, right, so you're just figuring.
Yeah, I mean.
Worst case scenario, right, I just, it's not, it's not going to take you 30 hours.
Well, I know, I just, I'd rather, if we're there for six hours, like I always do, we're there for six hours, or we can build for six hours. I just don't want to have to come back, that's all.
Oh, I understand that.
Oh, okay, I thought it was almost like a fixed price that you.
No, 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 not right now.
No, I just, and I apologize, I saw 30 hours, I'm like, oh shit. So.
Seems like a lot.
No, that's pretty thrilled, I mean, like I said, like.
I'll make a motion to approve the road grading for Flack Round, Gordon, and Peacock.
For a price not to exceed?
No, a price not to exceed 7,146, 40.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Do we sign these?
Initial one, please. We attach it to the actual invoices, you can always come in and look and see how close they come in after the time.
And with that, we are done with new business. What we have pending, still to come up, transfer station, capital budget plan, and Article 43, application for Lakeside Drive. And that being said, is there any public comments tonight?
If we go there, I'm sorry, I didn't recall Lakeside Drive, is that one we had in Bay?
Last, last week it came in.
Yeah.
It came in a couple weeks ago, road committee. Do we have a date scheduled?
It's two weeks, okay.
Waiting on.
All right, you guys call me, tell me I'll be available next week.
Oh, okay, so one of those.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So when you guys just make the date, I'll be there.
Any public comment?
Seeing none, I would.
Make a motion to adjourn at 6:58 PM.
I'll second that.
All in favor?